And here we are. We will begin with public comment. As, again, I'll look around to the board. I put the same restrictions on public comment as the last time. Again, we don't have a huge audience, so I think we can be reasonable about it. But anybody who wishes to make up public comment, please come on up to the microphone and come right up, introduce yourself, tell us who you are, and go for it.
Let everybody get settled here for a second. Okay, so my name's Richard Kedwaller. I live over on Amesbury Street. I listen to the meetings, the minutes from last meeting on the stream. And one thing became really clear to me, and that's that there's a bit of a hazard that lies ahead, and it may be so obvious that it's not clear yet in this process. And that's, I'll just make some quotes. Bonnie Gibbons said, "We need a design that'll knock it out of the ballpark." Owen Cassa said, "How can we figure out what citizens want? We attempted, but we failed." Thomas said, "I'm worried that we'll be unsuccessful again." Ken said, "The process has been imperfect." He's hoping the next process will culminate in success, and there's a good chance that town will be coming together on a wonderful design. They like the exterior appearance. In the survey, it's very important that that's correct, excuse me. And so we know there's a number of architects that are still maybe or maybe not in the running, and it'd be interesting to hear about that. So, the other thing I wanted to say is, thanks for you all doing what you do, because I'm really glad to be in this town. Been away for many years, I'm back here, walking over on a beautiful night. It feels great, and you people are doing an amazing job with your free time in keeping this township entity going. And this has been a really difficult procedure. I was involved in the, in one of the focus groups, and that was a daunting, interesting experience. So, yeah, so, everybody here I just quoted has one thing on their mind, and that's that this design will work. And we know that despite the best efforts of Reed Company, who I sat with, and Dick Reed was right there, and I listened to people just tear his work apart, which I felt very poorly about, because he did a, he did a very honest effort, just the way you all were. And last week, I was pointed out again and again, people are like giving their best effort, and that's important, and it got a little strident in there. And people were strident towards Dick Reed, and they, they just told him, "We don't like your design." Well, why not? Well, they couldn't say why not. You know, a focus group is fine when you're doing Tide Laundry detergent, and you're down on a low level. And unfortunately, in the process, these people were thrust into making a really crucial decision, but they didn't have the equipment to decide on it. They're not deciding on the smell of a laundry detergent, it's like a multimillion-dollar expenditure. And that's an important thing, to make that distinction. So, so we've got a whole board, and a bunch of citizens are worried about this design. And, you know, we're hung up about location, and a lot of budget issues, and rent, and all that's legitimate. So, what I'm thinking is, two things, is that the best way to solve this is not to choose one architect. You people, as a subjective group, making a decision that might or might not work. It absolutely didn't work the last time. In fact, it was, again, with respect to Reed's work, which I thought was more than adequate, it was a catastrophe, and it was a humiliation for that group, unjustly so. So, my caveat here is, you're headed for exactly the same recipe by choosing to go ahead and either going with Steve Smith or trying to accelerate this process. So, what's the solution? Is have a pitch. And for those of you for whom that might not be a completely clear proposition, a pitch is a, an invitational competition. You've got a short list, you get those people, and, and again, last week, people were saying, you know, I could see, I could see the eyebrows wrinkling at the prospect of viewing six hours of interviews that are 20 months old. Okay, you don't have to do that. What you do is you set up a pitch, and you get your architects out there, and you say, "Here's the design parameters, and show us what you've got in a model, and we'll let the public choose that." You don't have to make that decision. You shouldn't make that decision. Otherwise, you're just in jeopardy of being, having fingers pointed at you again. So, the pitch isn't anything that costs you any time or money, and that's very important, because I know everybody's concerned about time. The pitch is all on the architects. And every architect hates a pitch, but no architect wants to be outside of a pitch, okay? They all freak out, they pull out the stops in their office, and they come up with their stuff, and they do their best effort. So, so I think you should have a pitch. It won't cost you any time, it won't cost you any money. And who's in that pitch? So, you've got your, whoever else is left on your short list. And then, in my opinion, there's one outfit that's glaringly missing, conspicuous in its absence, from the original list, and that's Priestley and Associates. And why weren't they there? I mean, here you've got an outfit, he's active in the community, one of Maine's best architects, they got a prize-winning job 80 yards from here. They've submitted sketches on goodwill, and everything was going to hell in a handbasket, they came forward with sketches in goodwill, like, "I can help with this." And, you know, they were not reviewed, they were rebuffed. So, my question is, is there someone working against this outfit? To me, it's the most obvious choice, and I mean, I will say, for disclosure purposes, John is an old friend of mine, but I wouldn't be here if I didn't believe that they were a contender, let alone perhaps the best choice for the job. I mean, you think about it. Who knows this village better? So, I would strongly recommend that you have a short list, to which you add Priestley, Associates, and you run a pitch, and let, have a really interesting public discourse about, you put it right in this room, say, "People can troop by, look at the suggestions, model building, whatever is the parameters, and then they vote, and then you guys are clear." But to go forward and choose one architect, or to run down that short list yourself, you're running the risk of making that very same mistake again. And I think the hazard was in the fact that the board went ahead, and I'm not criticizing it, because I understand, you know, it's about efficacy. And I thought, I thought Dick Reed did a really good job. There were things I didn't like, certain aesthetics, but, well, I won't go on about the process that he was subjected to. So, you free yourselves from, from any blame, you put it out into the public view, it's a great exchange, and it's, I'm convinced, the fair, the most fair way to proceed towards the people on your list. So, that would be my input. Thank you very much. And if anybody wants some questions for me, yeah.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question of him, just real quick?
Yeah. Quick, yeah, we're way beyond our.
You had said that a pitch, and that, that kind of style that you were referring to doesn't take time or money.
Right, of your, your energy or the township's money. So.
Okay, so it doesn't take time away from you? The process still takes time.
Well, you could, you could do, you could say, "Have it to us in two weeks." I don't, I've been in that situation in other, in other, people come, a customer comes to you and says, "You know, we like what you do." "Oh, wow, well, thank you. We want you involved in a pitch." "Great, we're very flattered. When do you want it? Two weeks? Are you there or you're not?" I'm not suggesting two weeks is your time interval, I'm just saying, it can be very compressed. And nobody's breaking ground on this for a while. So, so what I'm saying is, in, in the time, as you're debating all these budget-related issues, this thing could be carried out in the public eye, and people have a stake in it, they're interested, and I'm convinced you, A, get a better result, and you're, you will be much freer as individuals. That's my conviction.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else wishing to make public comment?
I thought Priestley's totally on that short list.
He is.
Yeah.
I'll have to make that clear at the end.
Nick Ruffin, I'll try to be brief. I don't think you have to go that far. There was a pitch process in the selection that, that led to the choice of Dick Reed. I think by having the survey, you have collected a lot of information about what people think and what they want. You may not have the final design, but you certainly have a budget idea, which leads to the size of the building. And unfortunately, first time around, the select board didn't have that. So, I think you've made a lot of progress. Now, whether you select Steve Smith or not this evening, I think he was the number two in the last bake-off. That gives him a lot of credibility. He's also local. If you remember the discussions last year, there's a whole team of people, engineers and other people who would be involved in doing final designs and working drawings and all of that, contractors, who are ready to lend a hand in this. If you, if we go out to this list of architects from elsewhere in Maine, and I'm not saying anything against Priestley when I say this, if you, if you make it too broad, you've got all these people that really don't know the community, who've got to start at zero or close to it, and that's really going to delay things, and I don't think it will accomplish a lot. And I don't, don't want to be negative about the last process, but if you go online to the Maine Library, whatever it is, organization for the state, you can look at a list of all the library projects in Maine for the last 10 or 15 years, and who designed them, what the budget was, what the square footage is, and you can see who's gotten all the jobs, and who hasn't. And Reed has more than anybody else. The only thing that's, that doesn't work with that is that, I'd say 90 to 95 percent of Reed's work was renovations of existing buildings. He'd done very few from the ground up, and it really wasn't his strength. So, that's something to keep in mind in looking at other architects. Have they done libraries? Were they renovations? Were they new structures? And finally, I think what happened in the last one, apart from budget size, was, and I think the survey suggested this, people would like to have a building that seems compatible with the village, that complements what's already here, and doesn't try to stand out. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to make public comment?
Alan Mitchell from Rockport. My main subject is that the, this particular project has been the only project in 25, 30 years that I've been involved in the town that has not had the building committee involved in the process. We, the building committee, in previous years, has dealt with this building, the waterfront, the building down the waterfront, the public works facilities, the town office, the fire station addition, Marine Park Building, as I was thinking before. All of those buildings had, were organized through the building committee. The building committee's been inactive for the last 10 years plus, because we haven't had any projects. But I think it's time that you reconsider that the building committee gets involved, both from the design through the punch list at the end. And all those projects went pretty smooth. This project here, many years ago, was a little over a million dollars. Probably today would be a little over 2 million. But it all, all the projects went, went well, and it was organized and directed through the building committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Are they online? Can I find the membership of? It hasn't been active since I've been on the board. Anybody else? Come on up.
I just have a question on that. Why isn't, why was that, that the building committee's not involved? Just out of curiosity.
From, I've been on the select board five and a half years, and there has been no building committee since I've been on the board. Often, what ends up happening with, with a building committee is typically, and very often, it's an ad hoc committee for a particular building. I don't know whether that's been the history in Rockport or not. But certainly, when we got to the stage of, of having a design and employing a contractor, there would be a building committee. Whether we reactivate a semi-permanent building committee, as Alan is suggesting, or whether we form an ad hoc building committee, absolutely, there would be a building committee at that stage, once we have voter approval and move forward.
I recall their involvement with the Harbor Building, the new town office, and last, I think, was the addition to the Public Safety Building, which is 10 years ago, long before you guys were involved.
Right. Because I was going to go online, try to see what the membership was, but I don't even think it's listed.
By now, anybody's term it's.
I don't even think it's listed online, yeah.
Yeah, it hadn't, it hasn't been active since I've been on the board, I know that.
But while Mr. Priestley makes his way to the mic, I think that our intent was to have the ad hoc library planning committee, after a successful vote, morph into the building committee that would then oversee.
Well.
Hi, I'm John Priestley of Rockport. So, addressing architect selection, I think I wanted to offer up a perspective or a reminder that the ultimate goal is to have a June vote that results in a resounding majority in favor of the library. And to follow the same methodology as the last time, which is to pick an architect and have them develop a design, and put it to the test at the polls, could well have the same result, again. Factoring in 14 percent of those who surveyed who don't want a library at all, and the disenchant, just disenfranchised approximately 50 percent who favored the RES site, which came out of the survey, there's a high risk of another failed vote, or at best, an unenthusiastic pass. The town manager and members of the select board have already observed that a decisive vote is important. If the library were to pass by just dribbling over the finish line, there will be ongoing bitterness and a climate inhospitable to private fundraising. The select board, and I remember in your last meeting specifically Doug Cole, have already observed that any of the four architects could serve as the architect for the project. However, you need to identify the one who will ensure the greatest chance of success at the polls. So, a procedure I'd like to recommend, and by the way, I didn't share these notes with Richard, a procedure I'd like to recommend is that instead of going forward by naming one architect, you request design proposals from the four architects on your list. Since you are aiming to get an architect going immediately, to move things forward, then continue along that same trajectory, but with four architects, so that no time is lost. You could ask for a design proposal to be delivered in three or four weeks, let's say, and maybe allow two weeks for public review, and their vote for the people's choice. In this way, when the measure comes up in June, you are asking the voters to approve a design that they have already chosen. The chances of a resounding positive vote are much higher. As an example, imagine a car dealership where you're offered just one vehicle, $30,000, take it or leave it. Or another dealership where, for the same amount of money, you're offered your choice of four different vehicles. The latter is clearly going to sell more cars and have more satisfied customers. Giving the voters a chance means that you can identify the design proposal that is most likely to be successful at the polls. Equally as important, it gets individuals to buy into the proposal and generates enthusiasm on the community level. How do you do this? Well, it's easy. You already have a succinct, up-to-date program area synopsis that Ben, the librarian, created within the past year, and a target budget. All four architects are familiar with the project, they have all designed projects for it, they're familiar with the site, and they have base property information. Ask each architect to provide a rendering or two of the building. Plans are unnecessary for this exercise and unlikely to sway public opinion. Ideally, the renderings would be limited to a single poster-sized display board. These could be set up at the Opera House, at the town office, and at the current temporary library, with a box to cast one's vote with your name and address. The same images can appear on the town and library websites for online voting, and the town could easily opt to mail them out as well, if that was desirable. For the most objective result, the presentation should have nothing identifying the architect, just an alphabetical or numerical code. The drawing should be black and white and grayscale only, as elaborate renderings with color add a distracting layer of subjectivity, extend the timeframe, and add considerable Reading from the town charter, quote, "The duty of the select board is to execute the will of the people. The process I have outlined allows you to perform exactly that by determining what the will of the people is." Then you just pull the trigger. In summary, what I'm proposing is not a delay of the selection process, but it's a broadening of the process to ensure its success. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make a comment?
Ellen Shaw, Rockport, obviously. I'm on the budget committee, so I have some interest in how much this is going to cost. But I beg you, please don't make me write another Sisypheus letter. I do not want to write another Sisypheus letter. If they do another review, another set of people, another set of meetings, another set of interviews, they are backing up and starting all over again, and a lot of us are getting tired of that. You've had your reviews, you've had the library committee meetings, you've had meetings all over town, you've had people send things in. It is time to move forward.
Sally Cook, The Village. With all respect to John and John's friend, I was at the first six architectural, where the first six architects were interviewed and presented their designs, and John was one of the six. And Steve Smith was, Reed was, the committee chose Reed first. Of the six, when they were presented, Steve Smith was the one that got applause and some standing applause. It was a real wow design, and he was the second choice of that group. So, it seems like, and, and there were a number of local people there for, for the interviews with the six architects. It was three meetings over about a week and a half.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make a comment? I think we've heard from just about everybody in the room at this point, but any further comments at all? Okay. I do want to make sure, Richard, I think he was the first commenter, that of the four architects who expressed interest in the material that we reviewed, John Priestley was included in that, so he is on the list. I just want to make sure that you're aware of that, we're not excluding him. I guess I'll open it up to discussion among us about, we had the, the four video presentations from the last pitch, if you will, to review, and I would open it up, and we also had their, much of their material, printed material, PDF files, et cetera, to look at. So, I would open it up to the board for any discussion on, on their thoughts on.
Maybe I'll start the discussion tonight. Usually, I kind of wait till the end, and then weigh in with my two cents worth. But a couple of our speakers here tonight sort of spoke about how, what they thought the select board's responsibility was to the public, and, you know, how we should do the job up here, that's a little bit strong. But in thinking about this, I feel that I was elected to do what I feel is best for the town, after talking to the townspeople. And I also think one of the reasons that I was elected was to help move this process forward. I was unhappy with the previous select board's lack of ability to make decisions. So, what I feel is that the success or failure of this project, that I think Richard alluded to earlier, it does fall on my shoulders, and I don't have a problem with that. This is why I was elected. But because the failure or success will reflect on me, I feel that I'm going to have to make whatever decision I need to do to be comfortable with the project going forward, and ultimately, being responsible for the choice of the architect. So, I'm not a fan of putting this out for more discussion and other votes and everything, because, again, it's ultimately me who's going to be in the spotlight up here come June and July. But again, I'm comfortable enough that any of the architects can do the job, so I'm going to vote for one that I'm comfortable with, and that I think can get us over the finish line in June. So, that's my two cents.
Anybody else have a comment?
I have a quick comment, and then actually, a question for the other board members. So, the quick comment is that because of, you know, insane lifetime constraints, I watched John Priestley's presentation, and I also watched Steve Smith's. And I was very impressed with Steve Smith's. I was very impressed with a lot of aspects of John's as well. So, the question to my colleagues is, and, like, I'm hopefully not going to dime anyone out here, but for those that watched the other two presentations, for the other two on the shortlist, did I, did I miss some earth-shattering amazingness that was presented there?
Well, Tom, go ahead.
I have a completely clean slate on all of this. Wasn't involved in any of the previous discussions, don't know any of the people involved. Last time when we met, last week, I hadn't had a chance to look at any of them. I've looked at all of them at this point. I thought they all had merits. Difficult choice. So, I am curious about why there's such an overwhelming sentiment around Steve Smith, simply because I wasn't there, and his presentation personally didn't stand out tremendously to me, one way or the other, against the other very qualified presentations. So, maybe I'm missing something. I'm curious about that. That's not to say I oppose Steve Smith's presentation. I'm just curious about why there's such a, seems to be such a strong approval for what he presented. I was intrigued by the presentation by, and I don't know how to pronounce the guy's name, was it Becker or?
Brecker.
Brecker. He was out of Portland. I noticed that he's built libraries before. I just liked his presentation, on a subjective level, that one called out to me. I'd love to be, I'm really asking for information. What was it about Steve Smith's presentation that resonated with so many people?
To sort of answer Owen's question and Tom's, again, these things are terribly subjective. I think it was Brecker, I had to look at this to get it right, Winton Scott and Brecker, one of the two buildings, just, I didn't find the aesthetics of it nice at all, the way it presented, looking up Central Street towards it.
Yep.
Subjective. The other fellow, I respect the work that he does, but, you know, he was building huge buildings. That firm was, you know, a building that would hold 3,000 people during a workday, where, you know, our old town is 3,000 people. So, I sort of, again, thought, that's a little bit of overkill, and it loses the, the local touch. So, that's why the two folks from away didn't slay me with their presentations.
Yep.
I'll comment on, on Steve's presentation. I thought of the four, and I did watch all four of them. This time around, I did not see them the last time around, I relied on the ad hoc library planning committee, which I want to give a shout-out to, because they did a tremendous amount of work, and put in a lot of time, and so that, the fact that they ranked Steve higher than, than everybody except Reed, does carry some weight with me. But I thought Steve, Steve came a little more prepared than some of the other presenters. That was my opinion, that he was very well-prepared, he had a good team, and he had his team there, and he relied on his team to help make the presentation, and I was impressed by that. They all four were very qualified, and had a lot of, as you say, there was a lot of merit to each one. Brecker, I think, was the one who, who didn't really show us a building, but talked more about the process.
Yes.
And I actually, I kind of liked that, to a certain extent. But I did think that, that the Steve Smith presentation was the best organized of all of them, and seemed to have a team that was the strongest. seemed to have a team that was the strongest. That was my, that was my takeaway from watching the interviews.
And I was, I was gonna, like, I kind of went into watching Mr. Priestley's going, oh, I see why it didn't stand out, it's just sketches. But then, as I followed through the whole presentation, I realized you were walking through the design process from sketch in and through to a kind of final pictorial, like, like some of the other ones had done. The one thing that did stand out about Mr. Priestley's anyway was that Lime Rock would get rerouted through...
Yep.
Through the park. But I'll tell you, I really liked the idea of potentially not nibbling through to provide the parking on an angle, but I kind of liked that concept of having a bit of a standalone parking lot. But I didn't, I was grappling with how we were going to financially and budgetarily move the underground...
Sewer and water.
You know, sewer and water necessary.
Well, my understanding from a conversation I had with Rick months ago is that, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, the state has actually recommended that that's what we do with the traffic flow in that part of the village.
They certainly, they have responded positively to making a change there. I don't know that they've come down on a specific, you know, here is exactly where it has to go, but they are, I think, positively inclined to help us improve that intersection. That's the way I read it.
And the feel that I had gotten, again, when we were kind of going through the design before, and I, I hadn't watched them, like Ken hadn't, but it seemed like that bump-out concept of removing the, now we're just getting into the weeds, but as far as MDOT being happy, bumping out and making Lime Rock more difficult to get onto and separating it out a little bit, kind of met their same end goals of traffic calming and things like that.
I was going to ask Mark if he had any comment, haven't heard from him yet.
Got a lot of notes.
Unusual, isn't it?
Lot of notes.
I mean, the prior group's work, as far as I'm concerned, didn't go unnoticed in their recommendations. I mean, we, given the amount of time that they put into doing what they did by doing all the interviews and all the conversations going on around the room when it was being done and afterwards, we can't do that justice just by watching, you know, six hours' worth of information. You know, I tend, because I'm not an architect, I don't know, I mean, I know what would be pleasing in that spot, and I think whomever we choose, we can direct to make it happen. But I'm pretty much inclined to steer towards the previous group's second choice in the process, as they had much more time and conversation surrounding it. Having said that, the person that we employ, the manager, to make recommendations for us, who's been involved with that prior process, made the recommendation of Smith as well. So at this point, that's the direction I'm headed unless I hear something different in the meantime.
One thing we have to remember is that, you know, speaking about the pitch concept, that's kind of what happened the last time around. These architects, six of them, were all paid stipend to come up with a pitch, and it was not necessarily to design a building. It was to help develop a concept and to show us what their qualifications were to work with the town in designing a new library. So it's important not to get too hung up on an individual design in that process because it could change through the process, and that's one thing that Steve Smith said throughout his presentation, is he made it very clear, look, this could all change, but, but the idea of that last process, as I recall, was to, to show the town how the architect could work with us and to show, show us a little bit about the type of work they do and reference their past work and that sort of thing. So we're not necessarily picking a design, but we're, we're picking an architect that we feel will, will do a good job for us.
Right.
Yeah, I also wanted to just make another comment that occurred to me, and I don't know if it was Richard or John that made the point that John had done this work and made the select board aware of it, and we hadn't really paid attention to it. And I felt bad about that because indeed, John did do a lot of work, and early in the process, he wrote a letter to the select board. But at that point, because we were just getting going again with the library, I didn't feel I couldn't good conscience come down and, and talk with John and discuss it. I just didn't think it was appropriate at that time. So it's not that I was ignoring you or the other select board folks were ignoring you, it's just that, again, we were getting the process started and we didn't want there to appear to be any inappropriate contact.
Yeah. We were schooled by some architects during the previous process because after the vote, we, the select board at that time, the previous board had decided, well, let's reach out to all the architects and see if they have ideas about how to move us forward. And we were pretty quickly schooled by some architects saying, you know, yes, I'm interested, but I can't do that right now because Reed is still your architect until you dismiss them or until they withdraw. Ethically, we, we meaning the other architects, can't, can't participate in a process like that. And so that's the other reason that, we were very well aware, John, I know I'd done a lot of work and I was kind of interested, but, but again, because we were with Reed, I didn't feel I could look at it. And then Reed withdrew just a month, well, a little more than a month ago now, it was early November, when they withdrew from the process, and then we had to come up with a new process to do that. And again, and I emailed John and told him this the other day, I didn't feel that I could, we had decided as a board that we were going to rely on the previous RFQ and the information provided in that to help make a selection, and I didn't feel that I could accept something new from one member on that list without giving the opportunity to others. And so that's, that's where I am on that.
I only really had one last question, and I really am kicking myself that I hadn't come up with it sooner to be able to ask the question prior to this meeting, but are we confident that the team that these various architects laid out in their presentation 22 months ago, 20, 22 months ago, is that team still the existing team? I happened to be talking with Will Gartley today, and when we were done, I said, oh, just by the by, are you still part of, I think Will was kind of a member of two different architectural teams, and so he said that he was still part of, you know, that team. And I'm just kind of curious, do we have any, do we have any feel about, have any of the architects reached out and confirmed that they're, the presentations that were presented 22 months ago, how accurate of representation are they of the team that exists today?
The only thing I can say that is we reached out to, there were six in the process, including Reed. Reed withdrew, left five, and we reached out, or Rick reached out to all of them and said, are you interested in continuing? And the four responded, so I guess I don't know the answer to the question, but I would assume that...
And I guess I'm also making the assumption that if somehow there was a hiccup with one aspect of the team, that they have the professional resources to bring in and fill that temporary gap.
Well, and I think that was part of what was, that was part of each one of their presentations, is that they, they each spoke about the relationship they had with other professionals, and they cited a specific team at that time, and whether that specific team would continue or not, I guess we don't know 100%. They all talked, talked about long relationships with other professionals, whether it was landscape architects or engineers or library specialists, in the case of Smith, who mentioned a library specialist that he was dealing with. I looked to the board for...
I'm just going to make one more comment that I'm going to try to make at every meeting is that when we talk about a $3 million project, I mean, anything that I've been able to find of late with regards to contingencies is anywhere from 5 to a 10% number. So a $3 million building is only 2.7 or 2.8 million with the contingency into it. So let's just keep, keep that in mind as we go forward, not 3 million and it goes over.
Yeah, any budget would include the contingency, and the budget is not to exceed the 3 million. We've voted on that earlier.
Yep.
So the $3 million budget will by necessity include that contingency, which, as you say, is often around 10%.
And I guess my parting comments are that I, I do kind of agree with Doug in that I didn't watch all of the presentations, but I really trust what the library committee, planning committee had done. I do think that these architects are all capable of building the building that we're requiring or requesting. You know, it did kind of sway my perception a little bit to know that one of the individuals was the number two. And with all of them having the credentials that can build it, if there was a distinct number two and that number two is willing to jump on board for this, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
I think that it's really important in any kind of a building project, and I'm going into this blind because I don't know, I, I can, you know, I have a sense of the way the board feels about this.
You can only get away with that for a little bit longer.
Well, I can get away with it as long as it's true. So we need somebody we can work with. We need somebody who will take direction and be a very good team player. And I strongly desire that whatever the, whoever the person selected is, is willing to take direction from the select board.
I agree. It's, it's our project. I mean, I hate to be, you know, I don't want to be conceited about anything like that, but it's on, it's on us, as Doug said, it's on our shoulders. One of the things, and when we talk about a timeline for the process, I've roughed that out, which I'll provide when we get to that point, but one of the things that's going to be critically important to me in this process is public input. And it was mentioned by a couple of the commenters, I think that as we go through the process with whichever architect we select, that there are going to have to be a couple of opportunities for the public to take a look at what's been done so far by the architect and to weigh in on it and to make a comment, and then the architect and Ben and the committee that's, whoever's working with Ben can take that information back and say, do we need to rethink any aspects of what we presented? Because we do want, when we get to the time of an approval in, we hope, an approval in June, we want people to be familiar with it and to feel like they've had a voice in the thing, in the whole design process. And I think we can do that by selecting an architect and then making it clear to that architect that we would, we would expect that kind of public input and expect the architect to, to weigh that. Now, the architect is a professional. Somebody from the public could come in and say, well, I really would like to have, you know, 10 bathrooms on every floor, just to, just to make an absurd request, and the architect can, is going to come back to the board and to Ben and say, well, I appreciate the comment, but for these reasons, in my professional opinion, I don't think we can do this, that, or the other thing. But on the other hand, if there are legitimate suggestions on how to improve the plan or how to change the plan, or if there's a groundswell of, of public comment on one particular aspect of it that needs to be changed, we have to have somebody who's willing to do that.
For due diligence on the concepts that were thrown out tonight, because I, I think that it would be phenomenal if we could, again, do a kind of charrette's, a competition amongst professional architects to see which one resonates more. But when I kind of, timeline-wise, I grapple with that because just kind of by rough guesstimation, if we put that request out, gave them time to work on it, had time for the public to comment on it, and then had time for us to evaluate it, I mean, I feel like we're looking at basically where we have on our tentative timeline, worked, our second workshop with architect, is basically when we would be kind of finalizing some of those. I just conceptually can't wrap my head around how doing what would be a great process would put us in, in a good position for a June vote, if that's the route that we chose to go. Can...
At this point, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that the select board authorize the town manager to negotiate a contact, contract with Steve Smith and Associates for the design and construction of the Rockport Public Library.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion.
So can anyone wrap their brain around conceptually how we could do this timeline? Sorry, I just kind of wanted to finish. Can, can anyone up here walk me through it, how we can do that in a timely manner? That's the only thing...
The competition type thing?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I just don't think that we can do it.
Well, I'm a little concerned about it because I think it has the potential for further divisions, quite honestly. I think, we might get some great designs, we really might, but then we might end up with, you know, a couple of camps again, and for my, my thought was that we'd be better off choosing a well-recommended architect, and all four of them were great, but, but Smith does rise above as far as the manager's recommendation and the previous library committee's recommendation. I think we're better off working with one person and having that design be worked by the select board, by the library director, by the library committee, and with public input moving through. I, I think that process is going to serve us better. I'm a little concerned about having, you know, a bunch of different, a vote again and having an inconclusive result.
I would say just that, you know, our, our decisions are not going to be easy because they're, it's just a divided group, but the bottom line is, as Helen had said, we have to make a decision. It's not going to be popular with certain people. The location wasn't, but I hope that the administration and the boards at the library can work with us, and we will get people united behind it. And, you know, with, with the architect choice, I mean, you know, we have people in town, it's, it's a hard choice, but we, we have to go and make a decision without prolonging this any longer.
Yeah, and that's exactly how I feel about it. Owen, I think, you know, we as a group ultimately have to make a decision, and you can have meetings, you can have charrettes, you know, whatever you want, but at some point, we have to make the decision. And I can tell you, you know, the architect fairy is not going to come to you some night and give you the right answer. Yes, we got to make a decision, and we have to be willing to take the heat if something goes wrong, but...
You know, in hindsight, this should have been done three years ago, two or three years ago. But whatever, we're here today, we're going to make a decision, popular or not, we're moving forward, I hope.
Just to clarify some things, the motion was to negotiate a contract. I've spoken with the town manager, and typically, an architect's contract is fairly basic. Usually, the architect's fee is a percentage of the total project cost. That's the way Reed worked. The only, in this particular situation, the only part that has to be negotiated is the, we hope, unlikely event, that the architect does quite a bit of work and then the proposal doesn't pass at the polls, the architect does need to be paid for that work, so there needs to be a negotiation. But, but at this point, if this motion is approved, then the manager would bring a contract back to us for our January meeting, for our, for our review and possible approval at that time.
You do realize, our meeting's the eighth, right?
Yes.
And the manager's going to be back on the second? It's a short time window for him to...
It is, but as I say, the, the contract for the most part is boilerplate.
Okay.
The only, the only real issue is, is that issue of what happens if, because the fee is a percentage of the project cost. If there's no project, then the architect needs to be compensated. That's the way Reed's contract works.
No, I just know with him being gone three weeks and jumping back...
And he's listening tonight. He's already sent me a few texts. He's well aware of what we're doing, and he may have sent Doug one too, I don't know.
Thank you. That was a question that I was, I was going to do it after we voted, but yeah, how can we move forward in tomorrow?
If, I mean, the manager, I'm sure, would not, if he wasn't ready, he would tell us he wasn't ready at that meeting, and we would have to push it off a little bit. But hopefully, that won't be the case. Like I say, he, he expressed to me that he didn't think the contract negotiation was going to be terribly complicated just because of the fact that most architect contracts are fairly standard. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? That's a five to nothing vote. Next steps, selection of select board liaison to the design process.
Nominate Doug Cole.
Hang on.
Oh, sorry. I did that just for Doug. Moving it along, Doug.
I get the...
Moving it along.
I get a couple, I don't get too many perks to share, but I get a couple of perks to give.
You got it.
We have a motion.
No, he said nominate, he didn't say move. What, what I'm suggesting is that the select board provide two liaisons to work with Ben and the architect, and Ben's staff, and the town manager, and library committee, I'm sure will, will provide some liaisons as well. As you know, with the Freedom of Access Law, we can't have three of us together at one time or it becomes a meeting and, and all the ideas resonate there. And I think we probably will have a good number... And I think we probably will have a good number of workshops and meetings on this process through the next couple of months, which I'll talk about here in a moment. But I did want the select board to have the opportunity to be involved with Ben and the architect as frequently as possible in between the meetings. And so Doug had emailed me and volunteered to be a liaison, and I thought that that was a good idea. And I also talked to Tom because I'd like to have that constituency represented as well and and.
I think Doug just did a double takeover.
No, I did not. No, I'm kidding.
I'm sending you going like this because you're already the liaison with the library.
So my suggestion, I think, I think getting the widest representation among the various few points in town would be for Doug and Tom to take those positions, and so I would await a motion on that.
I nominate Doug and Tom.
Glad you thought of that.
Gotta say second. You don't have to, but it would be.
Is there a second?
I will, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. I think that it's a good way to to start moving the town forward in a in a united way. Doug and Tom have, in the past, had different viewpoints on this issue, but I think that we're gonna work, we're in a mode of trying to work together now.
Another example.
I am very comfortable working with Tom.
Likewise.
Okay, great. Okay, if there's no further discussion on the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? No, okay. And I'll make a further comment on this, too, that there may be a lot of meetings and so what I will consider you guys are as the primary liaisons. If there's ever a time when you, when Ben has, Ben is meeting with the architect, and now we know it's Steve, and you can't make it, then just give me a call and I will canvas other select board members and and allow them to to perhaps step in 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 either one of your steds. And Ben, too, the other comment I wanna make is there may be some part of this process where you need some alone time with the architect. And and in my opinion, that's perfectly okay. I mean, if you start saying all the time, then we'll have a discussion about that. But but if you need some time where, you know, you just need to sit down one-on-one with the architect, I think that that's perfectly fine unless other board members object. I think the select board wants to be involved as much as possible, but for me, I would realize that that professionally, you may need some some alone time once in a while. And I would invite Ann to to comment on that also, if she if she would like to, because I think, I'd be nice to have the library committee have some liaisons as well.
Please comment on Ben's alone time.
Ben, it's important to have alone time.
Thank you, thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for reaching a decision. I think it is important to move this process along. I do know that I probably will be the liaison from the library committee. I don't wanna prejudge that, but that may be the way it ekes out. But I also wanted to make sure that, you know, that we make sure that Ben really is the champion and really leading the process. And, you know, that we give him, you know, feedback when he needs it and then we're there to support him and maybe bring him back around when he gets a little too excited. But for the most part, I think, you know, Ben knows the world of libraries. I have every confidence in him and I know that you, as a select board, also have it. So so I certainly applaud that. Thank you.
Ben is our professional.
Yes.
And we recognize him.
Every group needs one.
The next item, and I provided select board members with my first shot at a preliminary proposed timeline, and some of this will depend on, and I gave a copy to Linda, unfortunately, I don't have one for you, Ben, but you can take mine after we're done. This is very preliminary and some of it will depend on how the architect wants to work. But what I've suggested is the next item on the timeline would be Monday, January 8th, which is our regular select board meeting where we would approve a contract for the architect as presented by the manager at that time. And then I suggested a couple of Monday workshops. I know Mark mentioned Mondays last time as as perhaps a good day to.
Just easy for them to focus in on.
For us to remember also. So I suggested workshops on Monday, January 22nd, Monday, February 5th, and then I bolded Monday, February 26th as perhaps a preliminary public concept plan presentation with some public feedback at that point. This would be the end of February.
So would that be like a 5 o'clock before our meeting on that day?
We wouldn't be meeting on that day. We'd be meeting on the second Monday.
Oh, oh.
At least that's the way it's been for the last five and a half years, but.
These would be full board workshops.
Yes, all these would.
These are the library committee and the architect will be working.
And I put it, I put at the bottom that there'll be additional meetings likely in between when when it's just the architect working with, because that's where the nuts and bolts work is gonna get done. But and we may not need all of these, but I just wanted to sort of get an idea out there. And also, you know, the the key dates, that on March 14th, we will have to vote to place a bond article on the warrant. And the public hearing on that will be on April 9th, and that's when we'll make our recommendation. So we kind of have to be mostly done by then. Do we have to have all the i's dotted and t's crossed on the architectural plan at that point? Not necessarily, but we certainly wanna leave enough time for voters to have a chance to look at the plan and to learn about the plan and to ask questions about it so that they feel like they make an informed choice. I mean, technically, we could leave the plan and present it on the day before the vote in June, but that wouldn't be a very smart idea. So that's what's driving a lot of this timeline. And some of this will have to be vetted with the architect to see whether it's a doable timeline or not. I quite honestly don't, I'm not an architect, so I don't know whether it is or not, but I just throw this out there as a preliminary proposed timeline. And if anybody has any comments or anything else on that, then it's it's just, I just wanted to have something to to work with to begin. And I'll give you a copy, Ben, and and Ann also. Could you come up?
Hold on, Josh, again. Has Rick set up or or, my name just went on my head, Megan, put together the dates for the budget committee meetings yet?
Yes, and I and I have to, I have that and I have to talk with her about that. And I actually had that when I worked through this document, so that that factored into a lot of what I talked about, yes. And that should be online here within a few days, as soon as I, I've been remiss in my duty of going in and checking off on it, so, but it's there, yes.
Is that a voting item or?
No, I don't, it's, I I put it together just because I think we wanna get started and I think it's it's important for us to know that we've got, we've got some deadlines to meet. We have, you know, we don't have a lot of time to waste. And so I kind of wanted to get the idea across to the board that, yep, we're gonna be seeing a lot of each other over the next couple of months. There's a lot to do and we have, we have deadlines we have to meet as far as getting stuff on the ballot goes.
But to look at the glass half full, too, Ben has done a huge amount of work already on this project and so we're not starting from ground zero, so I'm optimistic.
I just got a text from Rick on vacation saying he will talk to Steve tomorrow morning. So.
Thank you, Rick.
So the, I I think, I know Ben showed a lot of excitement at the end of our last meeting and I I think I can feel the fact that we're moving forward is is a good thing. So my final item on the budget was to schedule workshops and public meetings. I don't think we have to do that tonight, but but the proposed timeline gives us an idea. We probably at our January meeting will need to firm up some of those and get them on the calendar. And by that time, Ben and Rick will have talked to Steve and perhaps had a couple of preliminary thoughts on on how the timeline might work and and we can adjust it as needed at that point. Anybody have anything else?
Thank you, everyone, for coming out.
Thank you for coming out, you had a rough night.
Thank you, Mr. Priestley. You did a phenomenal, I mean, I fully anticipate, anyway, some of the aspects that you brought up in your presentation to work their way into it, into the final design, so thank you very much for that.
Thanks for everybody's participation. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Hold it now.
All right, five to nothing. Thank you all very much.